Do it stamina or does that have to do with experience?
I'm kinda thinking it's stamina, but I don't know much about it.
Not as good as it should be.
Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School District Board of Trustees. That the records show that a quorum of board members is present. And the notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Board members Russell Smith and GW Neal were unable to attend at this time. Please join us with switching your cell phones to some type of silent mode. Ms. Dowdy.
Uh, this evening, you noticed a new face at the podium. Uh, I think, how many of you read my update? Did everybody read my update so that I don't have to go through all that, but we're very happy to have Dr. Bonnie Kane, who was the previous superintendent for Waco State, so she's been going through this process.
The same time y'all did.
Yeah, the same process. But she retired from the district and so she's one of AJ's people that are going to be trained to.
I'm hoping. It's a group process.
Yeah, and you've been going through extra trainings to help schools like ours that um, there's, I, I told them in the update, there's constant changing to this. Because the manual's been reach, been changed like four times.
She was first.
Yeah, yeah, we were first.
So it's been tweaked several times.
The manual and the components, and I told them a little bit about some of the future components that will be added on, so to help us keep up with what is going on because it's almost impossible unless you're doing this continuously.
They don't send out updates.
Yeah, we don't have updates.
That's one flaw in this system. That's what we were talking about. What, and as you recall, there was no operational side of it. That what you got is what the superintendents got. So you go home and here's what you got.
Yeah.
Two days of a lot of good stuff, but then there was never, uh, here's the first thing you can do, okay? Uh, so it's, it was a good system. It is a good system. They put it in, they keep updating, but one flaw is there's not updates being sent out, so anyway.
So one of the things that when I went to Region Seven and I'd asked Marvin Thompson, who's been doing this, he said, this is gonna be kind of the blind light, leading the way, because he hadn't done that part. And so then all of a sudden I found out about Bonnie and I said, oh, thank goodness, because now you can lead us.
Well, Marshall was struggling.
Ma- Marshall, yeah.
So, so anyway, it's a pleasure to be here.
You wrestle.
You've done great work. I've got, I've got what you've done so far and as Ms. Dowdy said, there are gonna be some tweaks, but nothing can be undone and there is not a bad guy in this story. It is some of the things you're gonna wanna change after you look at other things. So we're, we're going forward and we're starting with constraint progress measures, okay? Y'all adopted your constraint progress measures.
Mm-hmm.
Now, why the con- the constraints had to be s- had, could, didn't have to be smart. The constraint progress measures due to a certain degree. They have that target, no fewer than one, no more than three constraint progress measures each has a target. And the target date is no fewer than five years. I made up one, I, I don't know.
Is it?
If I pick fine arts and it's kind of a source set, come on, sorry.
I'm, I'm getting back, I'm sorry, I'm the question, I'm the problem question student that y'all have.
I may move you up here, okay?
Is it, is it Mrs. Kane or Dr. Kane?
Dr. Kane.
Dr. Kane, alright, thank you for the, okay.
University of East Texas, right?
Wonderful.
So you're wearing my color, see?
There you go, got the red going.
You got the mail.
Um, if, if you don't help, it will help me if you'll kinda set the stage a little bit because as you mentioned, when we talked about board constraints and superintendent constraints, um, it evolved a lot since our first meeting or our first training in November.
Right, right.
And so, and the board constraints just kinda came out of nowhere, or, or to me they did because and I, I, so I don't really have a clear understanding of how it's, how it's, because.
You're a problem questioner, you're a good questioner.
Well, when we started in our training last November, it was the constraints were designed to handle everything else. You know, we were supposed to get rid of all of our policies and we were gonna develop just three to five. You can't do the, you know, you can't go spend all your money here, you can't do this.
Well, now they've changed that now to a gallon of gas. It was money, now it's a gallon of gas, so.
Yeah, and so it, it's evolved quite a bit and I've had some trouble because I haven't really had, we were never really trained on the new concept.
Okay, let's, let me just do a quick overview, okay? You know that AJ said a thousand and one times, student outcomes until adult change, adult behaviors change, student outcomes will not change, okay?
Yeah.
And that is based on research that if a district and a board operate, Bonnie Kane, I'm sorry, I didn't see you coming.
Russell Smith.
Oh, it slipped in like.
You sure did.
You were, you were busy. Okay, uh, that, um, if boards and, and administration operate in a certain way, okay? You get this much student growth. If you don't operate in a certain way, particularly like the way most districts are operating in the state, this is how much you get, okay? So this is what the research is saying. That if boards do this and administrators do this, and like either the gas analogy or the dollar analogy, either one, that you get this instead of this. So that focus has gotta be on student outcomes because everything else is so distracting. So that's why you give the superintendent or administration, here's your goals and here's your goal progress measures. Now, you're not quite to the, um, boards actually start being a little bit more relieved when you see your monitoring calendar because what you're gonna have every month, you're gonna have three or four reports that says, this is what we did, this is what we said, and this is what we expected. Your superintendent's gonna say, uh, okay, here's the goal, here's the goal progress measure, uh, here's what it is. Superintendent, did they meet it or not? Here's the presentation and if it met, it just met it. If it didn't, there's gonna be a, here's what we're gonna do. Sometimes it's like, okay, we're one tenth or one percent off, you know, we're probably not gonna change it, but if it was way off. And then, but also, the board has their own constraints and constraint progress measures, uh, self-constraint progress measure. Now, they're not smart goals and they're a little bit different and that's why we're gonna work on the wording.
Okay.
Okay, and so if everyone agrees upfront what the goals are, what the goal progress measures is, what the superintendent is not to ta- or to do not do, and what the board's operating agreements are, then you get your calendar in place and it, it kinda takes over that when you start using your tracker, that when you get to that fifty percent, fifty percent of your board meeting needs to be spent on these outcomes and these goals. The other fifty percent are the other outcomes, you know, what, finances, uh, we're gonna have a bond, you know, facilities update, the things that are just the housekeeping that all, all boards have to deal with, okay? But that proportion is important, that fifty percent, and, and it takes a while to get there because there's a lot of things to let go. You will even need to talk about, and one of the steps is looking at your board operating procedures. If you can get your agenda seven days in advance, then you agree with the superintendent that unless something is pulled three days in advance, you come to the meeting and nothing's gonna be pulled off consistent agenda so that we don't probably guess what's in the, uh, head with the staff, or stump the staff, you know? Surprise, we're gonna ask you about your question, you know? Every board member has the right to ask the question, but not at that, you know, we're gonna, so there's, there's a little agreement that you put into place about how you're gonna operate so that everybody knows what's going to be done, the staff knows what to present. So that gives you this instead of this. So we're going to, did I answer your question?
I, I think a little bit.
Ask me again.
Where did the board constraint, when, when did that get plugged in and what was the intent behind that?
I thought it was in there from the beginning, okay? I didn't think the constraint progress measures were in there, but I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember those.
Do you have an original book? Do y'all have yours original?
My com- I, I do, but my computer's in.
The original book, I'm not sure if I've got the original one or the.
Yeah, Stevie, you, I don't, I don't remember board constr- now, but you went through the training though this spring, uh, Mr. Naron.
He, he did, there was original, in the original training, there were constraints in there. We didn't really.
Get to them.
See, but, but, but the original constraints were considerably different from where we've evolved to now. The original constraints was where we were to handle the business side of things. Uh, as opposed, you know, he was wanting us to get rid of all of our, all of our procedures, remember? And then instead of having all of those board procedures, we would instead have, we could pick three to five over here and put them in.
Well, I think there's always goals. Here's the optimal, okay? And that's why what we're working for, this is, this will be a living process for y'all, okay? With the goal of let's get better as a board each time. Let's get better individually as board members, let's get better as a board, as a administrative team, get better as an administering so that we have one goal. What are we doing in all of these capacities that's not letting our kids get as far as they can?
Sure, I feel a little bit like the board constraint, and again, I haven't had an opportunity to talk, to speak to AJ about the intent of the board constraints, but to me, it's almost a PR thing of trying to do some self-awareness. Is that what, is that what the objective is?
Well, let's start with what's the, okay, your idea of what, I mean, your, I, I didn't mean that, so, I mean, what do you think? You think it's a good idea to have, let's not talk about constraints on the superintendent, let's not talk constraints on the administration. If it's one thing I wanna change in this is, it ought, when you say constraints on the superintendent, there's almost a phase as opposed to constraints on the administration. It's like, we don't care if the superintendent, you know, goes to Hawaii, but these are still our constraints, okay? So, do you think it's a good idea to have constraints on the administration? I mean, do you like that, y'all can say, we got three, I just want you.
Sure, I, I think so.
Why?
Well, I mean, but as you stated out, you, it's just like with your goals, you have to set your expectations.
Right, you reflect the community. Now, I put, I made up one. The superint- now, if y'all have a sensitive thing about fine arts, I didn't pick it on purpose, I just made it up, okay? I put a constraint. The superintendent will not allow funding to cut for fine arts, okay? I made that up. And here's why that would be a good constraint, not here. Here's, let's say this is a community that the, um, career and tech, not everything seems to be taken off of fine arts. And you notice the fine arts program gets so smaller and smaller, y'all used to have this musical, you don't have it anymore. A lot of the kids are going to charter schools that have big fine arts program. So y'all decide, we need to beef up our fine arts program, but you don't wanna run it. So you say, let's go back to three years ago, what, to your CFO, what percent was our fine arts budget? Um, I put four point three point percent, okay? So you say, as a board, this is important to us. It's not that we don't think it's important to the superintendent, but we're saying there are three things that are really important to us. And fine arts is it. So then, so that's the constraint. So now you have that constraint progress measure. So what you do as a CFO, how much was it? Four point four and one percent. So what you wanna say is, we'll need to check that at least twice a year, you can check it three times a year if you want, but usually your budgets are so hard to change. So you would say, or I could suggest you saying, the general fund budget, when y'all set your budget, you would agree on the budget, but you would say the CFO is the fine arts budget four point three one percent or more. Yes, okay, so that's a tick mark, okay? Then when you get your final expenditure audit, what, January thirty first or whenever that is, that would be something you would have on the audit. Did the, um, expenditures for fine arts stay at four point three four, four point three one percent or above, yes. So this was your constraint on the superintendent and these are constraint progress measures. One reason I put this up here is when we start talking about constraints on the superintendent, sometimes it's easy to get lost. We'll come back to this. Because this is kinda short and sweet and clear, easy to prove, and it's not any good for boards to say, you know, miss with our fine arts. So this is an example of constra- it'd be written a little bit better anyway. This is an example of the constraints superintendent and this is the examples of the constraint progress measure. So now let's talk about the board, okay? You said, so why?
Yeah, help now, help me, so I, because I, it's easy to understand the superintendent's side, talk about the board's side.
Okay, well, I wanna take your constraint progress measures because maybe y'all wrote your constraint progress measures not really understanding
That would be correct.
the power.
That would be absolutely correct, yeah.
Allow adult convenience, our preference to take priority over the academic progress of our students, okay? That was one question I was gonna ask y'all.
We copied it.
Tell me what that looks like. Because you can't expect her to, or the, on the constraint progress measures for her to say, now, you understand that about that fine arts budget? Got it, okay. Well, the same thing on you. You can't say, okay, this is great, sounds great, believe that. Don't allow adult, okay, so to me, that says, if Ms. Dowdy said, you know what, we have a really struggling campus, let's take some of our best teachers and move them there. How many phone calls you got? How many? Right, okay, now, is that the best, is that a good decision on her part? You don't think that'd be a good decision, take your best teachers and put it at your most struggling campus?
It could be if you're able to replace.
Okay, and let's say she is, let's say your HR guy says, oh my gosh, we just had to sit ten people from University of Texas or A and M, I don't know where, and they're here, they're new, so they're gonna do well if they're our, our strongest campus because there's so many strong teachers there. This would be a good time to move. Okay, now, that's right, so if y'all commit to that, when the phone calls start coming, are you gonna say, you know, we committed, because that's an adult preference. They're saying, not, you know what they're, none of this, they're gonna say, I don't wanna go, they're gonna say, I'm leaving. If she makes me move, I'm leaving. Now, that's when the board's toughest decision of, okay, that is an adult preference, okay? You know those kids, those, those kids need the strongest, best arts working teachers you got. So that's when you struggle as a board on, are we gonna support that decision? Because you can't say, and actually, one of her constraint, one of the superintendent's constraints is the same thing, you know, that she will not do that.
Let's flip that around for just a second and, and, I mean, because it's real easy to say that in theory.
Oh, absolutely, this is a wonderful one, oh yeah.
Yeah, it's real easy.
Bring it.
Yeah, exactly, it's real easy to sit here and talk about it in theory. But, I mean, realistically speaking, if, if you're gonna force a teacher to move to a campus they don't wanna be at.
Okay, well, let's, let's give another example, okay? That's the first one I thought.
They're not gonna do a good job.
Okay.
Question, do teachers choose the campuses they, they, they work at?
Well, they apply to the campus they wanna go, yeah, I mean, they do.
Oh, yeah, they're supposed to.
Now, I, I can try to persuade and stuff, but then I've, I've done some of that here recently, but, you know, um.
So what are some other adult preferences that you hear complaints about?
Well, I, I was under the understanding that teachers are assigned to campuses, they're not given a choice to be.
Okay, I didn't, okay, I wouldn't intend on getting into the questions, okay?
No, I just, I just didn't know, I, I.
Well, technically, she can assign anybody anywhere. I mean, they have a preference, the principal has some input, but at the end of the day, if there's a real need over here, you know, you know, and we have too many third grade teachers, we're not gonna keep them here when we need to move you over there, okay? Let's, let's use that as an example. At your top campus, uh, for some reason enrollment shifts, you don't have as many teachers over there as you have over here, okay? Where you need them. Now, how are we going to decide, we all agree these teachers need, thank you for, that's a perfect example, you get a sticker. Because, okay, because you agree, they have to move, I mean, you're not gonna pay teachers to have fourteen kids over here and you got this. So, uh, two kindergarten teachers have to move to first grade, to second grade, to third grade, to fourth grade, okay? Now, they, there's three campuses, there's, there's this campus that everybody came from, and then there's one that's close to that one, and then there's a real struggling campus, okay? And it's, there's some kind of vacancies everywhere. Or where you gonna get the calls from? And, oh, it's the adult preference of who's going and where, how are you gonna handle those calls? Are you going to say, I'm sorry, you know, administration has a good idea of where, but sorry, you have to move? Because they're gonna agree they have to move to, I mean, they're gonna, they're not gonna say, no, keep me there. Uh, because they know the budget won't support that. They agree they have to go, but they have a better idea than Ms. Dowdy on how that should happen.
I think, I'm gonna admit my doubtness. I was under impression that no adult could be just take care, somebody make a recommendation, force the superintendent, I want the person to be hired.
That's another example, no, that's a good example, and that's what we're going to do, we're gonna give.
That was my impression of Mrs. Fitch.
That's one, that is a good example of that thing. That, you know, no one can say, um, this is who you're gonna hire.
Oh, okay.
That is an excellent example, but we're gonna give like ten examples of what that would be so that Ms. Dowdy knows and the board knows, because she has that rule and y'all have that rule. Y'all need to agree because right now, everybody's got a different idea of what it is. So let's, let's agree, and I don't mean it's a discrete set, that this, if you have ten, you're pretty well gonna know. Someone gives you an example, you got ten examples and ten non-examples, and someone gives you a situation, you're gonna know if that's an example of an adult preference. So that's one reason I'm here is because we need to work through those things because it needs to be clear in your head what everyone in your constraint progress, self-constraints are, and how you're gonna measure it. So you have to measure your own, and let, let me just go ahead and show you how we're going to measure it. Or how it's recommended, because actually, you, the first thing we're gonna decide is what label you want, okay? The board really is going to measure its own self-constraint, and I didn't use your name, we used. Okay, so every month, you got three self-constraints, every month, you're going to grade yourself. You're gonna get an email from Ms. Dowdy that says, oh, don't forget, we have a meeting Thursday at six. We're gonna have pheasant under glass or whatever y'all have. And, uh, we're gonna go over the goal progress measuring on dual credit and we're gonna go over the goal progress measure, sorry, I didn't bring enough, I don't have everybody. We're gonna go over the goal progress measure on something else. And this month, you have your second, um, constraint, which is collectively, uh, or any trustee individually to perform or appear to perform either role of the superintendent. So you're going to be asked, not how you did, or how you did, or how you did, but you're going to say, here's how I think we did as a board, okay? Now, you gotta decide what words you want. There's, some people use begins, approaches, or masters. Some people use compliant, partially compliant, non-compliant, that's actually what I used on this example. Some people use meets, partially meets, or does not meet. Or we can do the NISD customer. So, look on the back of that piece of paper. You're gonna get a chart that looks like it's on the front, okay? So, did a majority of the trustees agree on any one evaluation label? Did you get four votes on anything? No, you got three, three, and one, okay? So, if a majority agreed that the board collectively and trustees individually have met or mastered the expectation within the self-constraint, then it's, the board's considered compliant. If a majority agreed that the board collectively and trustees individually have not met, or only beginning to meet, or approaching the expectation in self-constraint evaluation, they're partly compliant. Now, if y'all determined that it is non-compliant in regard to the expectation, then the item is added for discussion at the next regular meeting with the intended outcome being that the board identifies a corrective action. Uh, so let's say, on your goal, well, stick with the same one, allow adult convenience or preference to take part with the academic progress of our students. If half of y'all say, no, we didn't, we're not compliant, okay? Then y'all need to have a discussion on why you're not compliant, because you agree upfront, once you adopt this, this is what we are, this is what we do, okay? So that's why, if, if, y'all may wanna change it, you may wanna put some more definition. As opposed to, this is easy, the superintendent will not allow funding cuts for fine arts. Okay, either that budget amount is four point three one percent or but, or not. So that's an easy one. These, these are gonna be hard because of the way they're written, yes.
So, so from what I'm seeing from here, that the third one that we have, adult compliance, convenience, self-conference to take priority over the academic progress of our students, we need to be more specific in terms of how we're going to measure that.
Because it's a great goal. It is a spectacular goal. It is a spectacular goal for you and the superintendent, self-constrain is a spectacular one for her too. That is exactly what long star governance is about. But what I'm saying is now, before the phone calls start, before people don't understand, now is the time you lay out, these are some things that we think would be an adult preference and this wouldn't be. Okay? So, but let's go back to, y'all wanna start with the superintendent's self-constraints because I, I kinda went that way, but we got into this. I'm okay with that. Y'all wanna do the superintendent's or y'all wanna do the board? Mr. President?
Let's start with the board.
Okay, well, start with the board, let me go to the board. Okay. Board constraints on the board, okay, this is in three different, four different sections of your framework. Under vision three, separate from the, now, again, some of these may be new to you because like Ms. Fitch said, uh, some of these frameworks changed, so I'm gonna kinda go over this. In vision three, excuse me, I'm very happy to be back in East Texas, but I'm not quite used to, love the trees, but they, they don't love me yet. Separate from the constraints on the superintendent's authority, the board has adopted three to five self-constraints on its own behavior and self-evaluates against one of them each month. That's under vision three, okay? Got a page number on that?
What's the date, this is my step date?
It's right here.
Is it on here somewhere?
It is.
Peter Russell. Forty-two.
No, no.
I know, this is the latest one because I just got it, but you know what, you're right, there is one a day. See, mine just says, can you tell me that what yours says on the front?
Thank you.
And you mean ten?
Mine says sixteen to eighteen, copyright.
Mine says sixteen, seventeen. The reason I have this in is so I wanna know which is the last one I got, okay? Because I have got several myself, okay?
I may not have the most recent.
Well, I hope so, because I just went through this, the observation where I observed he and someone
Oh, it changes.
conduct a workshop to a, to a conference.
This one's prepared.
So I just figured the. Oh, I know how to be myself, I'm like.
Curious one, ours would say sixteen, eighteen versus.
It pulls out the gears.
See here.
Takes out the gears. Twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen.
Okay, you're right.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Okay, here's where we may have the difference, they're indicating who's got the training, do you have that Rick Alvarado? Okay.
That's the current one? Okay, is that everybody's or is that just?
Today's.
Oh, okay, well, then you're updated.
We didn't notice a change in the old one to this one.
Oh, yeah, and see, what happened, y'all go to that twenty-five dollar note on there and then you get the new book, it's like.
So then we need to be dealing with this one that we got today.
Yes, use the one you have. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would transfer my notes.
Right, but put it aside for.
Yes. Okay, so under vision three, what page is vision three?
Forty-two.
Okay, separate the constraints on the superintendent, separate, separate from the constraints on the superintendent's authority, the board has adopted three to five self-constraints on its own behavior and self-evaluates against them one, two, three. That is the process, only we need to decide, not right this second, before I leave, what label is your comfortable with. Okay, vision four, the board has adopted, what page is vision four?
Forty-three.
The board has adopted no fewer than one and no more than three board self-constraint progress measures for each of the self-constraints the board adopted. Ms. Fitch, I'm thinking that's probably what you're seeing that's new.
See what forty-three is and know, Jane.
And to be honest with you, I don't even know, I know where my first book was. I think I started throwing them away for fear that I'd get them mixed up. Okay, accounting, accountability two. Now, this is kind of the, where we're going. The board created a self-constraint concern, concerning the cost of time spent on government, okay? I know, I don't, I also something I learned from observing different. What happened the one when I was in Waco superintendent, the one I observed, the one you're talking about, the one Marshall was talking about, it seemed like they stressed different things, not necessarily, because I think they're trying to short something, but this group is really interested in X and they kinda start, because the one I went to two weeks ago, they hardly talked about time spent stat on, uh, uh, cost of stat, time spent on government. The one I went to, it was like two hours. So accountability two, also, the board self-evaluates using this implementation integrity instrument quarterly. That will be, you've already done, you're already on this track, so that's what this is, so you're already on there. And, uh, unity, the board is self-evaluating each quarter in pursuit of the continuous improvement counter, okay? So you've established your self-constraint if you, you've, uh, uh, are still warning those and so we need to go over scoring improvement.
So we could, we could revise a constraint and for example, make a constraint that says, instead of one of these that are very vague and general, make one that says something like, we will, we will spend at least fifty percent of our time in meetings focused on student outcomes.
And that is easy to prove because you will be using, you'll be, you'll see the board tracker being used a little bit.
And that would be an easy one to manage.
Oh, yes, 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 now, okay, but now, so when you get to that meeting and you don't have that, is everybody going to put down that we're. is everybody going to put down that we're, let's say you just can't get it, or you put that down as a, uh, self-constraint progress measure, but you know, darn it, the next three meetings y'all have, y- you're not getting to fifty percent. Is everybody gonna put down, we don't meet? I mean.
Probably not.
Okay, now that, thank you.
Just being honest, probably not, we just did a self-evaluation last month, so.
Okay, now, that's what we need to talk about, because that's going to be very, very important.
It goes back to integrity.
It's really hard.
Yes, it does.
You thought I was kidding. That was an excellent, what, what made you teach? Second. Then I went to, and I believe Mr. Montoya, you get the hamburger, cause you came up with a good one, that's, you can just go. Okay, now, let's talk about, are we gonna rat each other out, okay? Because what is gonna be the easy thing to do? Okay? Do you really want to put down on that, that we were non-compliant with our, cause you're about to talk about it at the board. But if you don't, what does that mean, why bother to do it, right? But that's gonna be tough for, now, I don't know you, but as most boards, what do we want, you know?
Well.
But at least if it's a measurable constraint, you can prove it.
That's true, and the discussion would be, okay, let's look at the agenda, what are we doing? We need to give administration, we need more stuff on consent, and darn it, you need to quit pulling so many things off, you know? That's why the rule of, if you're gonna pull those things off, let's move it to the next agenda, okay? You can control some of it ahead of time, there's certain behaviors and con- uh, um, administrative guidelines that you can have that would control that. And that's exactly what this is for. When you just can't let those meetings get shorter, because it is a constraint progress measure that is, um, data-driven, then y'all say, you know what, whoa, we're not compliant, we're gonna need to man up, put down that we're not compliant, and come up with a solution. So that would be a, an ex- that is an extra commitment to that time tracker, and not only that, there's a goal in there about that time tracker, that when you get to that point, you're up to like twelve points or something. Because that's one of the higher-end goals. Because that is key, again, that ensures you're, you're getting this.
Let me ask this question, I mean, if the goal is to have short meetings, and thus you wanna not have items pulled off, the consent and all that stuff, because it'll speed the process up, in other words, have all your answers, your concerns, all that stuff, answered before you come to the meeting, and at the meeting, you're just taking a vote. Makes for a fast meeting, everybody knows ahead of time, but how does that play into public transparency?
Okay, good question. Not sticker-worthy, but a good question. Okay, first of all, I'm gonna have a gentle disagreement, that, that the idea is not to have a quick meeting. Although, that's probably not the worst idea that anyone can have. The idea is that the meeting you have is focused, the half controls part of it, the half is focused on what you said you're gonna focus on. The other half, you have certain things you need to talk about, the financial stuff, you know, the, the, we got a leaky, the, a sinkhole somewhere. You know, it's gonna be really expensive, what are we gonna do about? But that, it controls the other fifty percent to that's all you talk about. It's not, you know, um, I was at Kroger, and somebody said that at the junior high, the cornbread's failed. Okay? Then there's this discussion, oh, well, I heard that too, I heard that that with the cornbread was, okay. That's not the time to talk about, I mean, if there's a parent concerned about stale cornbread, they need to call the food service, the cafeteria person and the food service person, it, ingredient needs to be taken care of.
Now, I will agree with you there, but I've heard you say twice now, particularly in regard to the consent agenda, that if you haven't, if you haven't given them a heads up.
Right.
Three days prior to the meeting, then you're not gonna pull it, so.
But that's not.
That to me is, you're having all the conversations behind the scene instead of transparency in the public meeting.
Okay.
So, help me, I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to process that.
And please keep asking me these questions, okay? Because in case you haven't noticed, I'm a little ADHD, and I can just woo, bird walk like you can't believe. So, what you want is, okay, here's a go, cause all of you, it's fair that y'all have questions, okay? You wanna have those questions, because first of all, you're elected. If ever, okay, let's think about your HR department, if your HR department, every time, uh, someone comes in and says, I have a complaint, and they go, hey, you need to fill out the complaint form, have you filled out a complaint form? You don't want that, I mean, you do have procedures and processes, but what does that say when you walk in and somebody says that? I don't have time to listen to you, okay, fill out the form, send it. Now, you have procedures you want them to use, but you wanna say, tell me what your concern is, have you talked to your teacher, da, 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 okay? That applies to you too. You've been elected, you know these people, you go to church with them, they're counting on you to represent them. When someone walks up to you and says, you know, cornbread's stale at the junior high, you don't wanna say, have you filled out a form, have you done this, have you done that? There's a fine line between, oh my gosh, I'm sorry to hear that, we don't want stale cornbread. Have you done these things? See, you want to hear them, but they just gave you the problem. Your job is to give them, and be empathetic and say, I am sorry, you're right, that doesn't need to go on.
Well, and don't misunderstand me, I would never assume to talk about stale cornbread in, in a board meeting, but, but when I'm, when I'm here, but if, if there was an item of enough, well, I don't know.
Cornbread's a bad example.
If, if there was an item of enough importance.
Like what?
That the superintendent put it on the consent agenda.
Okay, like what, give me, pull something off.
Heck, I don't know, give me an old agenda, and I can probably take it.
Give me the last thing y'all pulled off.
But, if, if.
The thing, that's cool, the, the thing of, um, the quarterback club donated, um, several thousand for the football team to get new jerseys.
That sounds great, why was that pulled? Did anyone accept it?
I don't remember pulling that one.
I'm just, I just throw that out for the example.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the, you know, the question would be, well, why, why ain't the, the baseball team getting some of that money?
Okay, so, so, uh, good question, okay, so on the agenda, it says, this group gave the football team.
The quarterback club.
Yeah, uh.
Gave twenty thousand to get new jerseys.
Okay, so someone tells you and says, well, that's a great, I'm happy for the football, but why isn't this happening to the baseball? Okay, so what's your answer? Now, is that, should that be a board discussion, or should the person with that question call?
No, ma'am, let me show you what I'm talking about. At the board meeting, Russell is gonna pull it out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And Russell wanna know, why can't we spend some of this money given from the quarterback club on the baseball team?
I like baseball.
Okay, okay. Okay, so someone gave you a gift.
Yeah.
And y'all wanna take this gift and say, uh, okay, do you have board op- I mean, I, I, I know there's, everyone's rule is.
Well, we're just talking about pulling stuff off the consent agenda. At the meeting.
Can I, can I jump in real quick, just, just, I think I can help.
Realistic example of what actually happens with this, with us.
Okay.
Gifts are not pulled usually.
Okay.
It's.
This is a good example.
Purchase, purchase over twenty-five thousand.
Okay, let's do both of those.
Purchases over ten thousand, those are the ones that get pulled almost every time.
Okay, let's do both of those, but let's start with the baseball thing, because that's a fair question. Because maybe that quarterback club said, you know, we kinda wanted to go to football, but it can go anywhere. But, the question is, you can't pull it off, the question is, you call her and say, I, now, if it's more than four, according to this, if you're trying to get the twelve points, if it's more than four days in advance, she is to find out the answer to that question and write to all of you, not to you, but to all of you and say, Smith had this question, the question is X, here's the answer. Now, if you say, I'm good with it, I mean, I, I, you probably don't have to say that, if she doesn't hear back from you, the assumption is, that stays on the consent agenda and you're not gonna pull it, if you go, not good enough, then she pulls it, because you, she does not need people pulling stuff from the consent agenda that the staff doesn't know, I mean, they need to be able to answer you fully. So if that waits till the next agenda, because consent needs to be consent, that needs to not be on consent next time, that needs to be on discussion.
Excellent.
You have the right to have those questions answered, but, but not pulling them for consent. If she knows that doesn't need to be on consent agenda, then that gives time to see if we can get you your answer, but if we can't.
Pull it out.
No problem, pull it off, we'll put it on next month. Budget amendments, okay?
Before you move on.
Most of the time, you don't have time to do that, most of the time, you tell us, we have to do this tonight.
But you gotta, well, but see, this is gonna be pressure on administration to get the agenda to you seven days, and it, it's not fair to get this to you three days in advance, and then put, then y'all gotta go, woo, and hurry up and read it.
So you're talking about, oh, okay, I just made a connection, you're not talking about seven days in adv- like, when it's posted, you're talking about the board has a chance to review it before it's posted.
We get it, we get it six days.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
You get it seven.
I'm trying to, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to work with you.
Keep figuring this out. No, 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 you get it, and everybody gets it, and it's posted.
So if something's on the congen- uh, agenda, and it needs to be pulled, it's gotta be pulled.
For the next month, though, it goes on regular.
Okay, so you don't deal with it at all that month?
Right, right, because you want this stat, one, you, you want.
So when I, if I have an item on consent, I would, my motion would be, I pull this item from consent, and then my next motion would be, and table this item till next month?
Uh, I, I think.
I'm dying to jump in, this is killing me, this is killing me, only because I have the background, I know exactly what Pam's talking about, and what you're talking about.
Good, good, good.
The gap here.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, the issue is, if you have the questions prior to the board meeting, and you give the superintendent the heads up, that I have these questions, so I'm likely going to pull the, pull them and ask them at the meeting, by virtue of communicating that prior to the meeting, then she can take it off the consent and put it down, cause it's still in draft form when you're communicating with her and asking her this question.
No, it's already been posted by the time we get the agenda.
Not the way she's talking about it, she's talking about it.
That's what I thought too, that's what I said, we see the agenda before it's posted.
Or, 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 the staff will be prepared that night, when it gets pulled, to have the information for you, as opposed to like what Bonnie said, just getting surprised, I'm pulling this, and then it has to wait till the next month, because the staff is here and has, and had no idea you'd have that question, so they don't have your answers. So I think it's one of those two things, by making sure the administration always knows ahead of time, I'm going to pull this, because I have these questions, whether, whether that comes in, in enough time to put it down as an action item, or whether it comes at least in enough time before the board meeting for the staff to gather it, whether it's.
Information.
Yeah, whether it's Sammy, or whether it's Michael.
And I agree with what you're saying, but to me, that is not what I'm hearing from Bonnie. Bonnie's saying that, by, you're not, you're, that if three days before the meeting, you're agreeing not to pull any of the consent items.
What they're trying, that's, if I don't hear, you know, that's scary. I'm trying to find that one, because, one, the idea is, you're trying to be fair, you want the board to have the questions, have the information, and the transparency is huge, okay?
Yes, that, and that's my point.
And there are two ways to do this, I'm trying to find one.
I don't want all those discussions to, uh, uh, happen behind, not in the meeting.
Quorum, information provided to one board member, presented to all, agreed responsibly outcomes, uh, where's the one, one board member?
Here, let's, let's give an example, if, if you've got this, if I've got any transportation people in here, I'm not picking on you, it's just a thing that came to my mind. Okay, the, um, it, we're gonna buy six new school buses.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's, and it's on the consent agenda, they're not expecting any problems. But, maybe, there's a question that comes up about, do those new, new buses have seatbelts? Well, maybe that's a question we wanna ask in open meetings, so it's publicly known, yes, we're buying school buses with seatbelts, or, we're not, we're buying school buses that don't have seatbelts. But, in order to have that discussion publicly, you're gonna have to pull it off consent.
And then you give the superintendent that notice and say, this is an item I feel strongly we need to have a conversation about. But then the risk is, you get to that fifty, if you pull too many things, you know, then you get into things like, you're talking about transparency, unless it's a secret, whether or not, and, and I don't know if that's a, just an example you might have, but, that is, um, um, something, no, that's my turn of thought, um, when you use that as an example, and you say, let's pull something off like that and discuss it, I, I, there may be a level of what you want is considered transparency, to me, transparency is operating systems and how we're doing things, but I, I think there should be a threshold of, at what point in time do, is there a hue and cry that people wanna know about this, as, as opposed to a person or a, two people may be interested. If a person or, let's say there's someone who just, you know, something, that's, that's been working for seatbelts for years, and they, they're, you know, you wanna know that that's on there, well, do you wanna take up the board's time for those one or two people? Or is that something you can say, hey, I know you two are really interested in this, and you work hard ordering six buses, I've got seatbelts. And you know what, we're always gonna order buses with seatbelts on them. But, is that something that board, the board, again, you get into this. Is that something that it's worth giving that up for? Is it that important?
Well, and of course, I think there's probably other ways to address that, for example, transparency could be that that information is published prior to the meeting. Right now, it's not published prior to the meeting, they don't have access to the board book to, to, to see the same information that we're seeing.
Would that help, would that help if the board, what you get is published on the web?
I would feel good about that.
Why have y'all chosen not to do that? Or is it just cause it's never been done, I mean, that's, it's not a put-down, it's just that a lot of time.
Well, we can't put the board book on, on the web, because it contains personnel matters.
Okay, but could we have two sections, the personnel matters that go to you in closed session, and the board agenda?
The agenda's posted, isn't it?
The agenda's posted.
But I mean.
Agenda's posted, but I'm talking about all the backup information.
I mean, it's not uncommon to do all the backup.
Can I jump in? First of all, as far, as far as, uh, boost clubs and donations, uh, our system, each program has its own independent boost club, therefore, it's earmarked with specifics. As, second, as far as transparency, normally, public knows something more than before we know.
Amen.
We get constantly phone calls, why, why, why? Then you're, you're in the dark. So you're, therefore, you say, okay, I probably need to draw that, and discuss it, because I don't wanna answer those people. If my answer probably not would be totally correct.
Mm-hmm.
Or consistent with the, like, the data, therefore, we pull that out and maybe discuss it, that would be transparent.
Okay, well, again, that's a choice the board makes, but then, y'all may not wanna be, I mean, this is a system, if you are committed to, we're going to start, we're committed to this, and not only do we have to change, but people in our community have to change. For example, someone calls you and said, let's say you got the call about the boost club, even though you knew the answer to that, let's say you didn't. Okay, what I would suggest that Ms. Dowdy does is, cause it, board members have the right to call, but what, what concerns this is that if you call and ask her, tell me about why we're only selling Snickers at games now instead of all other kinda candy, okay? What, my recommendation to her, and what you should put in administrative guidelines, is that when you call and ask her that, or let's say you ask the cabinet, you ask the A.D., okay? I'm assuming he's on your cabinet, or one of your cabinet people, then he says, and he gives you the answer, but he needs to tell Ms. Dowdy, so that once a week, she tells it, cause if you're getting those kinda questions, he may get those questions, and he may get those questions. What she oughta be doing, and I hate to be giving you more work, is that when you call, you have a right to call, you have a right to that answer, and you have a right to your answer about why is, well, not gonna go to the baseball. But what's not okay with Lone Star Governance is, you don't know that he's already talking about this, and you don't know this, that there needs to be, and I don't mean a big research thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith called and asked about the baseball thing, I mean, I'm, Mr. Smith asked why this happened, I checked with so-and-so, and here's the answer, I mean, not, not, not arguing, not.
Well, I, I think we might be overthinking and overanalyzing this, because.
Well, it could be, probably.
Because.
I'm sending.
Because the truth is, as best I know, that, that the intention has always sort of been to have a process where questions can be asked, information can be gathered, and it can be shared, and I know there's been, there's been at least an informal policy that says, if somebody, one board member asks something, then you answer all of it.
Oh, wait, and so you're doing that.
I'm doing that.
Anytime someone, a board member asks you anything, you make certain everybody knows.
I'm doing, I'm doing updates and stuff, so that I, I send out that information.
Okay, so everybody.
But I like what you said, I'm sorry.
But, and then one of the analogies is this, this purchasing of ten thousand, twenty-five thousand, and, and the deal about transparency that Pam wants to bring up always has the potential argument of, uh, well, how transparent can you be and not be wasting time of how much everything you're putting out there, if it's not really an issue, in other words, does the pack, does the, is the pack, is the community really making every decision for the district, or being that transparent? So you have that whole deal to issue with, but, for instance, when we went from, uh, ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, Pam had a concern about that, and of course, my, my position would be, well, the fact of the matter is, she had, she has access to that information anytime she wants it, if she's concerned about the, uh, about the amount of the purchases, and can be looked at, talked about, brought up. And as far as I know, if there's something that was bothering her that, and she knows about it, and, and there could be procedures where the administration sends the board members things about stuff over ten, and everybody has to look at it, if she had a problem, she could probably request it and be put on agenda to talk about if it was gonna be a big issue, or if somebody. to talk about if it was gonna be a big issue or if somebody in the public's really causing a problem with it. So I, I just think there's a, there's an ebb and flow in a procedure that can be utilized between the board and the administration and the public so that you're being transparency and the transparency is available, but you're also not having to give everybody's little issue the time in your board meeting which goes against your governance.
Is your check register posted online?
Of course not.
Or not?
Yes, it is.
No, mine's not.
Oh, not mine. I'm sorry.
Oh, gee, we won't see that.
Sorry, I mean, you, I mean, you collectively, okay? Okay, when your check register is posted online, then why can't Ms. Doughty say the check- every time the CFO says, hey, the check register's fixed the fifteenth or whatever, it's posted online, that's an administrative report and it didn't go to the board?
That's what we're doing.
No, it's posted after the board meeting, right, it used to be in the board, it used to be in the board book. They've taken it, the last couple of months, they've taken it out of the board book and they're just emailing it to the finance committee, but my understanding is it's not posted to the website until after the board meets, is that-
And if you did that, one, it takes it off of you not have to do- uh, again, it goes back to, a lot of times you're doing things just because there's so many little things that go on and getting the students-
Well, I would almost agree with that. There are so many little things that go on that I don't necessarily think that, you know, that the superintendent needs to be bogged down with all those things all the time.
Right, so, so if it's posted on-
She needs to be concentrated and make sure those student outcomes are improving.
Right, so if it's posted online, let's say from now on, it's not on the board agenda, it's posted online and everybody can see it before, what call would you get from somebody? What would somebody call, it'd be, you said people call about it?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't spend ten thousand dollars on this.
Okay, on what?
Consulting.
Consulting certain area. Oh, uh, consultants for-
Dr. Ken.
Dr. Ken.
Okay, well, to me, the person who, I mean, that, that person has a question, okay? It could be consulting or- okay, so who should be the one to answer that, okay? Should that, is that a board question or is that who hired the consultant or-
Superintendent.
The superintendent, okay? That's really a question if, now, do you want, you know, um, do you- is it that big a problem to get that many questions? Because you don't want superintendent, to me, that's a CFO question, you CFO, really?
But then what, what, you know, when they have those type questions and then we make it a priority in our board book and on our agenda, it becomes time concerning.
Why?
You know, it's, it's done, you know?
But-
We're going back and forth over, over the wire.
And how much time do you wanna spend on, okay, that-
I'd stretch it down.
The superintendent has a budget for consultants, CNI has a budget for consultants, I'm sure the A.D. has a consult- yeah, everybody's got a budget. Um, travel, but how much time do y'all wanna spend justifying to people? Now, obviously, there's a consultant or a hundred thousand dollar purchase or something, but are, are they all big purchases or it just, I don't like it? I mean, is it, that was ten thousand dollars and I don't like it? I mean, that's, that's, if it's the A.D., are you gonna- does the A.D. need to take up his time answering why he thought he needed to spend eleven thousand dollars on a whole new jerseys and whenever we could pass them, you know?
I think, I think you have to have a procedure to deal with that specific question, issue-
Right.
And, and try to handle it right there where it needs to be handled, but it comes into a bigger one that becomes a board meeting situation you can.
Right, and that's maybe what your threshold could be. Look, we won't deal with it and, I mean, obviously, there's the legal matter of, you know, he, what is yours, a twenty-five thousand dollar threshold? That there is a legal matter, so how many of your questions are over twenty-five thousand and how many are about ten thousand? I mean, how many questions you get over the twenty-five thousand mark?
I'm, I'm thinking in terms of what Russell said about procedures because it seems to me, being a new board member, that when we get phone calls, I've, I, I handle it by getting a phone call. If it's a concern, I revert to the superintendent. I tell him, this, they asked me, what should I do, this, I said, this is what I would do, there's other things, I understand your concern. Call her, get a resolve with her, if you don't get a resolve with her, then you need to take the next step.
We got procedures.
Then we need to, and then we deal with it. And that's the way I thought everybody else was doing it, but I, I don't know if that, that's happening or not.
That's good, because, because you know, everything you refer to her, she may not literally be the one to answer. It probably goes to Holly and Holly says, can I ask what this is about? And they say, well, I really think that the middle school prin- the elementary principal didn't do X, Y, Z. Don't you think that probably goes to either the elementary principal or the, which is where it should go? Okay, so, good job referring it to her because her office can refer it to where it should go. So that's good, that's a jigsaw, okay? So, so then should the uh, money things go to- how much justification should time do your CFO spending explaining when he probably doesn't-
Well, part of it's a matter of priorities. Uh, for example, if we're spending uh, forty thousand dollars on, or committing, committing forty thousand dollars to Astroturf-
Right.
When we have, you know, I don't know, five hundred thousand in, in HVAC needs-
Right.
What's the priority? So part of it becomes a priority issue and who sets those priorities? If we don't vote at that at the board level, then-
When do you vote on that? Okay, that money's all CFO, okay, at budget time, you say to the HVAC guy, you got a million dollars to spend because that's expensive stuff.
Right, but they like to move stuff around. They, they'll come back and they'll say, we need to do this budget amendment 'cause we need a twenty thousand dollar sign. Well, guess what, I, I personally, as a board member, would rather see that twenty thousand go to a roof. That's the kinda priorities. But then the other half of that is, I know what I've been pushing for big over the last year since I've been on the board, is let's make a list. Let's, let's prioritize our facility needs, that way it doesn't become, we know, we know when we've got money, it goes number one, number two, number three, number four.
Speaking of consultants, it probably wouldn't hurt to have your architect, y'all have an architect here or somebody to say, I mean, 'cause you're, you're be- I mean, I love that y'all repurposed this building and y'all probably, you know, money is tied, it, it, every so often, it does not hurt to have a facility study. Then it gets back, that also gives you protect, 'cause when someone says, we don't need, why are you spending so much money here or there? At a board meeting, you will discuss this study.
I would, I would love, it, it's like having a strategic plan, you know? It's like, okay, this, and we're just gonna work our way down that list and get it locked off.
How do you think that should be done?
Oh, well, it, the, the plan should probably be developed and it should be a three to five-year plan, but it needs to be reviewed annually.
Okay, would that be a good superintendent? If y'all feel that strongly about that, wouldn't that be a good constr- 'cause the superintendent, uh, of course, will not-
I've been begging for it for a year, so yeah, let's make it, let's put it in there.
But you need three friends, okay, you need three friends. It's, it's okay that you want that, but everybody's got their thing, okay? You need three friends because she cannot do everybody's thing. There's not enough money, there's not enough time. So, and I don't care if you talk to Ms. Doughty about what you think's the most important thing in the world, you talk to her about that, everybody's got their thing and there's, and there's probably nothing uh, wrong with what anybody really wants, but you got so much time, so much money, so much staff energy.
Agreed.
That is an excellent thing for the board to decide. Here's what we're going to, Ms. Doughty will do every year, year one, there will be a strategic plan. Year two, it will be a facility study, 'cause usually those, like you said, are three or four years. Year three will be this and year four will be that, okay? One, that's one study or one big, big thing a year. Two, she can probably afford it. Three, she knows it's not gonna be, and we, it's not plus, we need this study plus. You're committing, this is what you can expect every year, then y'all don't have to worry about the facilities thing because it's a- I just made up the other strategic plan, but you may wanna look at those things. Y'all get together because everybody's got their thing, okay? The board's got to get together on what's important, narrow it down. So she just has that one thing, okay? And then that would take care of this facilities thing, that's a very fair thing to do. But if, if, if you've asked her for facilities, he's asked for strategic plan, he's asked for something else, a superintendent doesn't know what to do and what to do first.
Oh, I agree with you wholeheartedly there.
So is the issue your superintendent or is the issue the board not having the narrow focus?
Oh, it's definitely board.
Okay.
I mean, there's no if's ands or whats about that.
So what can we do? That's what Lone Star Government is about. It's also knowing that you, people aren't on the board 'cause they're making money. People aren't on the board 'cause it, I mean, it takes your time, you got, you're on the board 'cause you have a real passion for this. So there is not enough time or money to do everything everyone individually wants because you want so much of this district. But there's got to be a narrow focus. What this does is says, checkmark, good guys, thank you, but let's narrow it down to make it doable. Right now, it's like here, you know, we're just throwing so many balls at her uh, with good intentions. See, there's not a bad guy in this story. I wish you were sitting over there, I keep thinking I'm ignoring you 'cause you're sitting over here by yourself. I may sit here and just talk to you for a few minutes.
Scoot over to the chair.
Yeah. So, um, so, so that, so that's what you, help her help you.
I think that's where we are, um-
On these constraints?
Only, well-
That takes us back to the constraints.
I, I mean, with the overall, overall picture, with, with the meeting being fifty percent or more-
Right.
On student outcome.
Right, but you have to manage yourself, you have to self-police.
Right.
This is about board self-policing.
Yeah, and that's my concern, you know, that's, 'cause we have kids that are in the fourth grade that's reading on a second grade level, fifth grade that's reading on a second grade level. That's where I want, I would like to see our, our superintendent, superintendent focus on, on helping our kids.
I think you will be pleased at, I don't know if it's the next meeting or the next meeting, 'cause I'm not certain of the schedule, but I think when you see the monitoring calendar and what you're gonna, because y'all are really close to that, but in that monitoring calendar, if you're monitoring yourself, every- but you have to commit that y'all are going to honestly, honestly-
Focus on student outcome.
And assess your budget.
We, we can sit here and debate this all, all right, but yes, our facilities aren't great, but that's not our big problem.
Okay, what's the big problem?
Student outcomes.
Okay, so then, so then let's get back to, but see-
So, I mean, we don't need to be all over the place.
Student outcome.
We didn't need poke- we, we've got two campuses that are IR.
How many?
Two campuses.
Okay, there you go.
And we've gotta fix those two campuses.
Right.
But don't even talk to them.
And we have to keep the one that we have that is not on IR.
Keep them on.
We gotta keep them off and we gotta keep the others off.
Then, then you need to help us write constraints for the superintendent and for the board that ensures that happens.
Well, let me just tell you, well, let's go back to this number one.
Okay.
Trying to get us back to-
Right, right.
Here. Why are we where we are?
Right, why do you think you're where you are?
The board.
The board.
Okay.
Uh, we, we have trained the community extremely well. We've lost four, a- as I know of, we've lost four principals at the high school and we've lost multiple other principals at the high school.
Elementary campuses.
Elementary campuses.
Wouldn't be lost.
Left the district.
Because?
Because there was a direct line between what people, what either teachers or pe- or people in the community wanted-
To the board.
To the board, and then the board would put pressure on the superintendent and then the superintendent would put pressure on those principals and they would just finally get fed up with it.
Okay, hang on, hang on, do you agree with that?
Based on my experience, I agree that that is the perception for folks that have been around for a long time.
Okay.
Now, uh, what, what I have seen in my couple of years is that, um, I, I pretty much early on looked and thought it's not being administered from the top correctly as far as who you're putting in place to run the different institutions and what you're backing them up with from the top from, with discipline, with curriculum and allowing the teachers to teach in the classes. And then you're always gonna have some of this filter in where somebody's got a personal preference or agenda that has nothing to do with the education of the kids.
Right.
And, and, and you have to deal with those, but, but it doesn't change, if you, you're gonna have those no matter what you do, but it doesn't change the fact if you don't do the core and if you're not teaching the elementary kids to read and write and monitoring that and putting the right people in the right places at the campuses that keep the good teachers and backup people and discipline, you're not getting that done and that's the number one, that's the number one student outcome.
Okay, wait, wait, hang on, do you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Well, I, I, I would say the second one is the curriculum, the, the reading curriculum.
Okay.
And that, those are addressed in those.
Do you agree with those two?
Do I agree with?
One, that the board's too close with, I, I think narrowing that down, the board's too close to the staff and the community. There's not that wall between, I'm a, I'm, I'm a trustee when I'm not sitting here with the six, my six friends. You're just talking to me as a trustee, that, that- Okay. One, that sometimes the board's too close to the staff and parents and circumference administration on campuses, which makes them wanna leave. And the other is we got a weak reading curriculum and a weak, in the way we do-
Well, the core, the-
And the core.
Our statistics were showing that we're not teaching our kids what they need to know early on and then once they get behind, you don't catch up.
We got a rigid problem.
Then they're in, they're in the system then, that's where we are now.
We got a rigid problem.
I agree, I, I agree with number two. Number one, I have, I, being a new board member, I have knowledge, I worked for the district before, I have knowledge of how things were done in the past and I have to say that a lot of times the, the superintendent was told what to do by the community or somebody in the district, uh, somebody on the board.
Okay.
And, and I agree with that because that, that's what would happen. But I'm, my hopes is that's not gonna happen now, that's why we have new board members, that's why we're trying to get, working together so that we can change some of that. It's gonna take some time, I'm sure, but-
But, but until we label it, I mean, it's not blaming, it's naming.
Right, right.
I mean, it's not blaming anybody, if we can't name what our problem is, we're gonna have our own problem. Okay, Ms. Fitz, what do you think about that, those two statements?
No on one, yes on two.
No on one, yes on two.
Been here thirty-five years.
Oh, that's right, you've got two staff members who are- No, 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 I said, well, it's two staff members who are not on the board, so y'all-
Been here thirty-five years, I'm seeing all of them. At the end of the day, I've said it repeatedly, we have a pretty important job to do. One, make sure the students learn. Second, gain the trust of the community. We are in a position that community second does everything that we do. They need to be more transparent, that's why we discussed that. And of course, get all the IRs.
Okay, how, how do you, in your mind, if you had a magic wand, how would you gain, how would this board, this administration, this district, gain the trust of the community?
I really don't have a one prescription.
Or more than one.
But as a person who is normally not visible in the community as much as it should be every time I turn, there's a question with a hint of it.
A question with a what and hint? Ah, okay.
Another word, uh, why is, or-
Okay, but why do they ask you, if it's about, I mean, if it's about asking, I can see why people would come to you, okay? But why would you have to read the program?
I, I honestly, every time there's a question I said, I said, we have a superintendent.
Okay, and so what do they do?
And you need to contact.
Okay.
And then, to be honest, they roll their eyes and walk away.
Okay, but why are they rolling their eyes and walking away?
I honestly don't know.
Okay, well-
They probably didn't get the answer that they wanted to.
Okay, okay, so there's a difference in the district's not transparency and I don't like the answer I got, okay? Now, we all have a need to want to put, you don't relate, I mean, the reality of the situation is, you know, so there, there is a, a need, they know you, they come to you, I mean, particularly since you're the A.D. so long, but-
But, but, excuse me, since they know me and they come to me, they have never, one of, none of them have said anything to be in their favor or expressed, I think it should happen, it just says, why is it, why is it?
Okay, but, but isn't that okay for them to ask that? I mean-
I don't have a problem.
Let's, yeah, okay, so, so really, you're good with them saying, 'cause it's, 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 a lot of people say, well, we got a morale problem. Okay, who controls my morale? Whose job is it? I wanna know, somebody needs to make me happy, okay? Why is y'all making me happy? Okay, it's my job to control my morale. If you've got people who are saying, why, I just kinda wanna know why, or, or some of it is, you know, you're a board member. I mean, and being in the know, that's a lot of information. If I find out how much was that gift really, you know, I have a, I can go to the coffee shop, I got a little bit more interest in this gift that I get. I mean, a lot of it is just human nature. I mean, we're in the Facebook and, and to be able to ferret that out and say, you know what, one of my constituents came to me, then I have to reading parlor, I'm my turn to call Ms. Doughty-
Doc, s- s- excuse me, you, you mind if we take a break?
Oh, I'd love to, thank you, thank you.
And I have a question that I wanna bring up after-
Okay.
Well, you tell me now so I can be thinking about it.
Okay, what, what y'all want about?
My question was gonna be if you could give us a sample of a GPM-
Sure.
Uh, for board members for constraint number one. Like, board member will not, but will not pull item on agenda without prior discussion with superintendent in sufficient time to prepare the, the expansive documents.
Right, we'll work on that when we get back and I'm gonna be looking at your question 'cause it's in here, I'm just trying to look between questions and I can't get distracted.
Seven, you leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we gotta go, but we gotta meet at seven.
I've got some Russell constraints.
Yeah, at seven.
I've got some Russell-
Hey, let's take about five minutes. Hey, let's take about five minutes. There's some major time constraints, it has been requested if you would help us walk through our board constraints.
Your board constraints?
Okay.
Board constraints, is that right?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Board constraint number one, adults, the board will not allow, without convenience of all factors, to take care of or the activity progress of our students. If that's the goal you want, there's nothing wrong with that, but you need to, uh.
Be more specific.
Yeah, yeah, our, we need to have examples of, how are you know you're doing that?
I like what Pam, um, suggested, the board would spend at least fifty percent of its time at all board meetings on student outcomes. I would like for that to be one of our, our constraints, I like that.
And that is very measurable, it's specific, it's already something that you're gonna work toward, uh, and, uh, it's, the nice thing is it's measurable, so. We won't talk about which one we're gonna delete, cause actually you can have more than, so, okay.
Well, those are not really ours, are they, they, they were just really borrowed.
Okay, and that's okay, we can, uh, the idea is really y'all discuss them, and then you wait for another meeting before you affirm them, so I think in your enthusiasm and wanting to get this done, you may have, uh, tried to hurry through it. That's okay, there's nothing that can't be fixed, the idea is to get what you want, and you have more information, so what would be another, so, okay, here's three that you have, just to recall, collectively, uh, performer, sure before any of the roles that I've been to pretend, that's gonna be kinda hard to prove too, all right, violate board policy, AE, you're not supposed to do that anymore. Besides, AE's not that, all the ones not to violate, AE is your vision and mission and.
I was gonna say, you're not supposed to be doing two or three anyway, so I'm not sure why you want to reiterate the constraint that you're not supposed to be doing anyway, should be called down if you are doing it.
Okay, so, fifty percent of this time, what's something else that the board feels like gets in its own what?
Micromanagement.
Micromanagement.
How can we deal with that?
Show me, tell me what that looks like, give me an example.
I'm wondering if, if this could be a, that can't be a.
That's kinda like micromanagement, because, yeah, cause it said, board members will not pull item on the gen- on the consent agenda without prior discussion with the superintendent, in sufficient time to prepare responsive documents for meeting. That seems to me like a good one, because.
Talk to your fellow, okay, is it measurable?
What is sufficient time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Well, that's, that's, yeah.
Okay, is it measurable?
Define it.
Sufficient would be what?
Three days, four days, I don't know.
Okay, are y'all gonna move to the point, cause right now, as most board, I mean, as, as I was, it's, because of planning and last minute things, sometimes you get it out right before, the goal is really to get it out ten days before, how much of a change would that be to you and your staff? Now, you may have to skip a month, like, the, the bills may have, not the bills, but the, um.
It's.
You know.
Well, if we get it, if, if, if we get it on, we get it on Friday before the Thursday meeting right now.
Right.
Wow, you're almost getting it.
Yeah, so, I'm sure.
By Monday.
If we, if we knew by Monday or Tuesday, I'd be okay.
Monday at five, Monday at five.
Yeah, that'd be the best, cause I gotta give my staff plenty of time to get them.
But you would say, if by, if the board's agenda is posted no later than X.
Right.
Then, um, this, the su- the board members who weren't pulled up on the consent agenda will do that by Y, by Monday at five.
Is that a constraint, would that be a constraint?
Well, if you're saying, because what you're saying is, no one, no one, I mean, well, you, it's not that you can't, it's not likely there's a death sentence to guys in that. But it would be violating your own self-constraint, and I expect that is.
But we all have to be in agreement with it.
Then if y'all agree to do that, then you probably have to explain to your fellow board members, but that's okay too. So, that would be a self-constraint, that this is just like, we're gonna spend fifty percent of our time on student outcomes, we will, the board, individual board members will not pull items from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Ask five o'clock on Monday, assuming the agenda's posted Friday, and bye-bye.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
Uh, when, when you're saying that, are you saying they'll pull it, they'll inform us they wanna pull it from the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I, we.
I will do an amended agenda and put the item in the action?
Okay, one or two things, let's ask, okay, are you saying, if you're gonna pull it from consent, that puts it on the next month automatically for a full report and not on consent?
That's a tough one, let me explain why, because we have some things on those consent agendas that are timely, that, that we gotta operate for operation of the board, I mean, for the district.
Okay, okay, I think this will, uh, we had a parent very, very wisely and respectfully talked about some of the, when we were talking about consent agenda where I misspoke, but would that allow you, if it's Monday at, okay, your board meeting is Thursday, it's seven, so you could amend it up until Monday.
Monday at noon.
No, it, our board meeting is Thursday at five.
Five.
Five, so you can.
Amend it up until Monday at five.
Oh, five.
Okay, so, what you're saying is, if you don't hear from somebody before five o'clock on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
But if you, see, that wouldn't give you time to repost, if, to get back to the reposting thing, if you wait till five o'clock, you can't repost.
It's gonna have to be Monday by now, by noon.
Well, but actually, if the repost, well, but if the reposting is just taking off consent and putting it on regular, that wouldn't, now, you may not have all the background information.
Do we have to go through that process, or can we just notify that we're pulling the, pulling it off consent?
I think it's a waste of time to make the, make Holly and them have to redo it, if, if, if you get the information from the administration and you're not happy with the answer, you still have the right to pull it and discuss it at the meeting.
Yeah.
And, and then, and then, if, if you do that too much and violate the fifty percent rule, then when it comes to self-evaluation, we'll be telling you about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna put that non-compliant, okay?
I mean, that's right.
But again, I think the catch was, if there is an item on the consent agenda that, that you have questions about, give Ms. Dadda the question, and she'll try to have it answered, you know, and if.
So, is, is the.
It could stay on consent.
Is the real thing we're trying to get at here is, if you've got a question, make sure you notify the superintendent by Wednesday, before the meeting?
Before the meeting? Yes.
Is that what we're really getting at?
In time for me to get the information.
No, I think, I think you're really getting at, you're getting it to the administration to try to answer, and, uh, enough time before the meeting to resolve your issue, or know that it's not a resolving issue without having to bring it up before the board, and here's why, and so that then if it is, all the information is present at the meeting to handle it.
Right.
And probably eighty percent of those may go away and get satisfied.
Right, that is right.
But if not, pull it, then we'll vote him.
And, Kel, to make certain, Kelly, so, Mr. Smith emails Ms. Doughty, I want more information about item number six. Okay, now, he's, he's just emailing her, so she wants to give all the information about number six, can she email everybody and say, Mr. Smith asked this question about item number six, here's my answer, do not, do not respond to each other, and if you respond, if you do wanna respond, you respond to me only, do not copy everybody.
That's what she does.
That's right, that's what he's doing.
Okay, so, why isn't it working?
It is.
That part's.
Oh, you just wanna reinforce it?
Well, we're trying to keep it.
Right.
With fifty percent.
Okay.
Being.
Okay.
Student outcome.
Okay, Holly, did you get the wording for that, would you read what you have down in the wording to make certain the board, it's hard for me to write, and I'm trying to stay up with what everybody's saying.
Okay, the first one, the board will not pull items from the consent agenda without sufficient time to prepare for a response, then we said, the board agenda will be posted no later than. Without notifying the superintendent. Without notifying the superintendent. To allow sufficient time to.
Right, and if I ever found, let me put like, if I got an item that I start digging in, you know, and stuff, and I say, you know what, we're not gonna be prepared for this.
You're right.
I'm, I'm gonna pull that and say, you know what, we need to wait, I, I mean, I've done that, you know, because, you know what I mean? I, I mean, if I, if I find that it, we're just not ready for this, and it can wait, it's not urgent at that moment, I'm gonna pull it.
So, what happens if something comes up on Thursday that affects an item that's on the consent agenda?
Example?
Well, I don't know, let's say we're looking at, um, a contract for.
Let's not build an example, just finish your question, okay, finish your question, without an example.
Well, the, if, if, if there's an item on the consent agenda, and, and I think everything's kosher and great, but then a question arises on Thursday in regard to, yeah, or.
You, you think of a question that, yeah, maybe, yeah, okay, all of a sudden it occurs to your head.
Or maybe, maybe I read an article or something, and I'm like, oh, 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 there's a new law that says we have to do this, gosh, that's gonna impact this, that's a question.
Okay, what if you have an item that one person, see, y'all could have a board operating procedure, it takes three of you to pull something from consent. I mean, you may have that question, and it may be a legitimate question, but if everybody else doesn't have that question, should you?
Absolutely, it's my right.
Take up everybody's time answering that question.
It's my right.
But, but if the board says it's your right, but if the board comes up with a board operating procedure that says one person shouldn't be able to do that, or two people, you need, you need two or three people.
So, if we're getting ready to buy school buses, and I read that the law's changed and says, oh, our school buses have to have seat belts, and I find out about this on noon on Thursday.
You don't need their vote.
I can't, I can't.
You don't need their vote, you call her.
But that's not what our thing just said, our constraint just said, I'm not gonna call her.
Uh, but.
No.
You couldn't pull it out the agenda, but you can call them.
You can raise it and call it and get their information and.
But you can't pull the item out of the agenda.
I don't like it.
You can't pull it to delay the discussion or vote.
But, so y'all need to decide, do you wanna put a constraint in that it takes more than one person to pull something off consent?
Okay.
If you're just, if you're just pulling off consent to put it on the action agenda, I'm not sure that is, makes any difference. If you're saying pull it off and you're delaying it for a whole month, that's problematic.
Because, right, if it's, or if it's something that I'm gonna have for the district. But, but I know how to judge that, in other words, I know, is this critical right this minute or not? And if it's not, and I find that, uh, it's something we need to pull because we need more information, and I would certainly pull it, I mean, I would pull it.
Yeah, you would, yeah, because you have that information.
So, couldn't you call her and say, hey, I just read this law, and?
Maybe, what if I can't get her?
Oh.
I'm just saying, it's happened, it's happened.
Okay.
It's happened, I'm, I'm just taking, I, I, that's my, that's how my mind works, through every scenario.
Okay, and that's a, a good question, it's how much the board, if, if that's okay with the board, then you don't need your fifty percent thing.
Well, I, okay, that's, I think we need the fifty percent, but could, could we word this to highlight the key word, governance, that issues of the board's discussion must be centered around, outside of student outcome, governance?
Okay, tell me more.
I mean, that's what we, that's, that's governance and setting policy, and.
Right, right.
You know, and I think a lot of.
So, you'd restrict what we're putting on the agenda?
No, no, no.
Restrict what?
Um, what, discussion?
Oh, yeah, but I, I'm trying to.
This, uh, discussion maybe, that we will limit our discussion and, and dialogue to governance issues.
Unless there's something legal that's giving Ms. Kelly heartburn.
Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I guess to be safe, I could say I was pulling everything.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm, this is going all over the place, and I'm, I'm having a hard time following. Fifty percent of the time should be made on construction, that's, that's, that's the, that's the constraint.
And, and no more, no, I mean, they're not saying it needs to be more, fifty percent of this, not the fifty percent of this.
And then, and under that would be these, uh, measurements, and one of them could possibly be the, not pulling, are we talking about the governance? That, are we, are we talking about a, a whole different complu- a whole different.
Mr. Green.
That's, that was just one.
Digging with, with.
Yeah, right.
Agendas.
That's a, that's a different constraint.
No, Mr. Green, it's actually, uh, you already have.
I have a problem with that, cause I, here's what I see is, uh, fifty percent of the time, I can live with fifty percent of the time being instruction. Under operating procedures, we can deal with operating procedures on all these things we're talking about with, uh, with, uh.
Agenda.
Agendas and. Have held person can bring, pull off a, uh, pull off an agenda item and all that kinda stuff that can be approved by the board at some point in time, that would be a.
We have some.
Not a constraint.
Not a constraint, but it would be a board operating procedure.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Uh, to me, for our purposes at this point, uh, we've got it centered on, we've got it centered on what is the most important thing. To me, for our purposes at this point, uh, we've got it centered on, we've got it centered on what is the most important thing.
And to you, that's.
And to me, although our time spent to, on all these other things are aggravating, it's not the problem.
But in your mind, the problem is?
We're not, we're not focused on instruction.
Right, okay.
Fifty percent of the time, and again, I think the other problem is, we let outside influences affect the board indirectly that affect the superintendent.
Then how do you write a constraint progress measure, a self-constrict progress measure on the board? Because that's not the superintendent's.
Huh?
That's not, everything I heard was, because the board does X, the superintendent can't do.
Well, we didn't like the allowing adults' convenience and preferences, we didn't like that one, but it's, we could reword that some.
Well, it's kind of nebulous, I mean, it's, it's like.
But we could also.
Whose preference and whose convenience, the board members, the public?
But it sounds great, it's a good start.
Sounds good, but, but what I'm saying is, we still have an issue with the board doing what the board, maybe we just need to say that the, that the board will do what the board's supposed to do. And the superintendent is to do with the superintendent.
How about, how about, um, how about number three? I mean, what this I think is saying too, maybe, is that, that the board would not go beyond, I mean, would, uh, I can't do it in the negative, I'm not trying to do that.
But say, basically, you can't let us.
Just, just that you, the, the boards, um, could, uh, whatever.
Well, number two is close.
Procedures, it's not procedures, but.
Uh, operating procedures.
Operating procedures, that the board, uh, will follow the operating procedures, okay?
As long as we're to be right, the operating procedures, to write, I mean, see, in the operating procedures is where you can get a lot of these little, the.
Right, that, so why, maybe we even just say, follow the operating procedures.
If you would've said, let's say ninety percent of the time, 'cause we don't have perfect, I think you're perfect, but, you know, you're probably not. Ninety percent of the time, the board will follow its own operating procedures with the commitment that we're about, that in a future meeting, we're gonna go over operating procedures where you can really get down into those kinds of things that aren't legal issues, you know, but it's like, uh, the time stuff with the superintendent and, uh, pulling consent and those things like that. But that, see, that's measurable too, once you get your board operating procedures, if it says, um, and we'll, we can add them, then everybody pulls them, but this stage, okay? And we're not compliant. Uh, it could be some other things, 'cause I hear concerns about Ms. Dowdy and her time, and some of you feel like, you know, that she's not having time to run the district because she's doing other things. You put the other things in board operating procedures, and then you make a commitment to follow that, that's measurable. But, am I on track or off?
I think we're, we're getting closer.
Okay, and I made up the ninety percent too, so, 'cause there's gotta be some wiggle room, things, like you said, things come up. So, anyway, but that'd be more, now, you don't have to have more than, let's say.
Bonnie, can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes, no fewer than three, whoops, no fewer than three self-constraints on the board.
I understood that they were keeping the first actual constraint, and then the things that they just came up with were examples of goal progress measures underneath number one.
Okay, number one, okay.
That number one said, focus on academics, and so the first goal progress measure, in order to measure whether they've done that or not, is to make sure that fifty percent of their time at board meetings is spent on academics, is that correct?
Okay, tell me what you thought the constraint was, we worked with you thought.
Number one, whatever this is, number one, allow all convenience or preference to take priority over the academic talk.
Oh, okay.
That was the, that was the constraint, now, how are we gonna measure that? The first one is the fifty percent rule.
And the second one's the ninety percent.
The second one is the not pulling off the consent agenda.
Okay.
The third one could be, the superintendent's not gonna be asked by a, a board member to work on any matter unless X number of board members requested, or whatever, you know.
And that would be, actually, that'd be a good thing to put in the board operating procedures, then that way, that would fall under this too, okay? Because you have to have, uh, no fewer than three board self-constraints, but you can have no fewer than one self-progress, self-constrict progress measure. Then we don't have, we could have, a, under number one, we could just have two go progress measures, or self-constrict progress measures, and keep number one there, you're correct. Now, we need two more board self-constraints.
Keep number one.
Okay, stop, so just say, I, I gotta get it in my head, okay, wait a minute, okay, we're gonna keep, allow adult convenience.
Yeah, uh, well, not, the board will not.
Will not, okay, okay, so then from that one, it's gonna be the fifty percent rule?
Well, of the time will be spent on instruction, and ninety percent of the time will be on the new and improved board operating procedures. So that is a go progress measure and measurable board self-constraints on the board.
So that's the GPM one point one and GPM one point two, that's both part of that first goal.
Hundred percent on board.
You're okay with that?
Operating procedures.
That gives us two, two measurable things under one.
They're measurable, and this doesn't actually belong to those activities, it'll be, or it's a little bit different, the board will not, been fewer than.
We're keeping the constraint, as, not to allow the board.
Pulling the items from the consent agenda is nowhere.
These are really good self-constraints.
No, make it go away. The one.
You guys are really good yourself into what you're, you're practicing what you preach.
Okay, so then, if those are the three for under number one, okay.
I just got number two, what was the third?
We said fifty percent rule, pull, pull, do not pull the items, is, uh.
Oh, no, see, I said that.
All right, that one went away.
I said that goes in board operating procedures.
Ninety percent, okay, we're at the ninety percent rule, and.
Now, I made up ninety percent, okay, I just said.
Okay, well, I'm gonna just say this, that if, if the ninety percent of the, of the board's operating procedures, there's a lot of board operating procedures, so those can be measured, so do we have to have three?
No, I would say ninety percent of the time, the board will be in compliance with its own board operating procedures.
Actually, said we have to.
Okay, I got, I got, I got.
Okay, that.
Ninety percent, and I, again, ninety percent of the time's my number, y'all need to come up with a number. X percent of the time, the board will be in compliance with its own board operating procedures, what number do you want? Ninety percent's a A.
Ninety percent's fine.
Ninety percent, okay, that's it, just, yes.
Okay.
Fifty percent.
Okay, so we've got one, okay, Holly.
Worth, worth that again for me, the board will comply.
Holly, would you read that, 'cause you're the official.
The board, um, constraint progress measure number one, the board will spend fifty percent of board meeting time on student outcomes, should that be regular meetings? Should we specify that regular meetings?
Okay.
Yeah, regular board meetings.
Okay, that, now, according to Long Star Government, that's every meeting.
That's right, it's every meeting.
Well, when we're dealing with facilities, that wouldn't be, when you have your facility meeting and your budget meetings, that wouldn't be practical.
But it's not saying you can't. Okay, but it's not saying you can't have the meeting, it's saying that you have the meeting, but you're aware that you're not spending half your time on, on student outcomes.
You're violating it tonight.
I mean, it's not like.
But I mean, if you call it just a facility meeting.
Every meeting counts, except, uh, like, if you have a, a, a.
But you're gonna have. That's what, these are our constraints.
But you're gonna have to have those meetings sometimes, you're just gonna have to have.
But it's not a facility meeting. Just live up, live up to it, okay?
You're just gonna have, we're in violation, okay?
Oh, oh, I agree, no, this, actually, this whole meeting would count because it's all under advocate, I mean, this whole thing would count, because it's under, you're setting up operating procedures. So this whole meeting, one hundred percent of this meeting, 'cause it's one item, counts.
Towards that instruction.
Well, but see, this supports instruction, it would be setting up progress, it's developing the progress or measures or constraints, it is measuring them, and it's discussing them, because what you're saying is, we wanna make certain what we're about, okay, we need.
Number two. Okay, collectively, or any trustee individually?
No, no, number two is.
Number two is, the board will follow a non-compliant board operating procedures manual ninety percent of the time.
That's the.
What was going on?
That's the GPM.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
CPM, CPM.
See, GPM?
Also, we never came up with what we're gonna measure, but two of those were correct, we're just on race the others. You wanna be, you wanna be compliant?
Let's do, I like the compliant.
I like compliant.
Okay, compliant, is that a, for precedent, is that consensus?
Pam, you like compliant?
Compliant, uh, comply, uh.
Partially compliant, non-compliant.
I don't like compliant at all.
Steve, what do you like?
Some people just don't like to be compliant.
You say that was Freudian, did he, did you say something Freudian?
Yes, he did, compliance is some negative connotation to it.
What you like, Russell? I kinda like meats, partially meats, and, I mean.
Meats, meats is softer and more euphemistic.
So what do we go with politically correct meats?
What is the state use, begins, approaches, masters?
Uh, I've seen different ones, I mean.
Let's go with meats.
I like meats.
Yeah, meats, okay?
It's a little, it's a little more.
A little softer.
That's the.
We're gonna be soft and.
We have to be sincere.
Okay, and we get too far along, we may go with the harsher, like, we may go with.
These are labors.
Okay, so now we know what we're gonna measure with.
Let's make that a constraint.
Okay, make that a constraint, what is it?
Well, I, I, I wrote one.
Okay.
I wrote this one, any board member with questions that need to be answered before that board member can vote on that issue, must attempt to get those questions answered by the administration and the issue resolved prior to the next meeting.
Guys, I can note that, if you got, you got some nods there, I don't wanna start writing on it, and everybody's throwing up.
That's pretty simple.
Okay.
Any board member with questions?
I mean.
That need to be answered. Before that board member can vote on that issue.
Let me finish it, 'cause I think.
Before that board member can vote on the issue, must attempt to get those questions answered by the administration, and the issue resolved, at least attempt, prior to the next meeting.
Prior to the board meeting.
Yeah, prior to.
I'm trying, I'm trying, but I can't talk that best.
I'll just bring it to you, I'm not.
Actually, I started with board members.
Prior to the board meeting, right?
A response, must attempt to get.
To the meeting.
I was good up until you.
A response.
Number two, if you can read my.
Choir.
To the meet, to the board meeting.
Two, three.
That could actually be a third one under that first one.
It cannot be voted on, Russell?
No, it's just, it's just trying to, it's attempting to get the response, the information that you need to make the decision, and get it resolved prior to the meeting, it doesn't mean you will. And if you don't, you still have your rights to do whatever you wanna do as a board member at that meeting.
Pull it or whatever.
Yeah.
I think what you, yeah, what, what we're gonna ask.
How do you feel about that?
Yeah.
Um, this is kinda way I think we've been operating a little bit, 'cause I mean, I, I do get calls from y'all, and I get information to ask, and I try to get it to y'all in time, and like I've just been saying, that if I find, while I'm collecting the information, that I know that we don't need to do it at that time, I mean, I, I pulled some things myself, they're not ready.
Well, your answer, your answer might be, you raised a good issue, and we're not gonna be ready to handle this issue, so now I'm not gonna put it on the agenda, or I'm gonna pull it.
And we'll pull it.
And pull it.
You might, that might be, very well be the answer.
Right, and if I find that it's urgent or something, I gotta get on it, you know?
Okay, but for, for not those times, for the times I think, which Smith was trying to get to, is that, is it getting back to the issue of, of one person keeping it kinda alive while everybody else is ready to move on to get to that fifty percent?
Well, I, I think it's an issue that there's a lot of sincere questions that can come from board members, as well as those board members may be prodded by people in the public, and I think a lot of those, and, and there's a lot of misinformation that goes on out there, so you get a lot of calls and questions, and, and you can send a question to the administration, they can answer it, and say, that's not a fact, that's not true, we are teaching math at that grade level, or whatever the case may be, and you, and, and, you know, the question gets answered, or where it can be, it's not an issue. So I think there's issues that are on the agendas, that people have legitimate questions about, that won't resolve before they can form an opinion on the issue, and they can ask those, and they get that information, and they go, okay, well, that satisfies me, now I can take my position, whether it's on consent, or action, or whatever. And if you don't get it resolved, then you still have the procedures in place to deal with it. If the administration says, I've answered your questions, we're still gonna take a position on it, then that person can still pull it from the consent, and put it on the action that evening for discussion, and raise their issues right there in the open meeting.
So what you're saying, what I think I hear you saying, is no surprises for the superintendent at the meeting, the superintendent.
It's not, it's not just for the superintendent, for the board members too.
For what, for the superintendent and the rest of the board, if the superintendent hadn't, hadn't been asked that question.
Or even the public.
Or the public.
It's not a surprise to anybody.
Okay, okay, are you, are you working on that board here?
But I think what you're trying to get at is, you don't like, you, you, is, is, hmm, you're trying to avoid surprises at the meeting, but it's not always just, I'm just.
That's not the goal, not trying, not trying to avoid, I'm trying to get issues resolved so that they don't even become an issue at the meeting. And it's a, it's a, it's a smooth sailing concept, and everybody's on the same page.
So the objective is not to eliminate surprises at the meeting, that's not.
Well, we don't want that either.
Not if they're playing, if they're playing the tax, of course.
Well, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm not talking about.
Okay, if you're talking about a, just a legitimate, something that comes.
Don't surprise me, I, give me a, a warning, yeah, don't, don't surprise me.
I, I, I still say, we could maybe get by with one constraint, and put that one as another.
But Bonnie, how's that not a board operating procedure?
I think she's saying we're supposed to have a few or three.
How's that not a board operating procedure?
To me, that's, that falls more into a board, that, that needs to be a board oper, that these are board, that, when you say ninety percent of the time, we're gonna follow the board operating procedures, this is, first of all, it's kinda complicated the words, okay, and, but that is exactly what is perfect for the board operating.
And they haven't looked at their board operating procedures, certainly not with this board, this board has not, so.
Well, well, see, that could be at the next meeting, if we send it out, so they look at it before.
Yes.
Make notes, um, and then come back to the meeting armed and dangerous.
Yes.
Then we're not looking at them, but it's like, all these things, because I think there's gonna be a lot of aha's, like, cool, you know, or, or, we have this in operating procedure, why aren't we doing it? You know, and it is reaffirming that we're gonna do that. And then it's also opportunities for some people who think some things aren't in board operating procedures, like, maybe with the transparency, there may be strong feelings like, we ought to, that deserve a discussion, you know? Uh, but that is your Bible. And your constraint is gonna be that fifty percent, uh, ninety percent of the time, you're going to follow it.
And so when we're talking about those board operating procedures, that's going toward our fifty percent of student outcomes because we're doing the governance, is that what I heard you say?
If you will look at unity.
'Cause I could, I could see that being a, quite an extensive conversation.
Okay, is it a conversation that needs to happen for this board to be a more efficient running, a more efficiently running board?
Well, absolutely.
Then, then if you will look under, I, I'm uncertain that's under unity.
Just wanted to clarify to make sure.
The board works collaboratively with the superintendent to lead toward the vision and student outcomes.
I could argue just about everything we do has to do with student outcomes, but.
Well.
Is there a definition of student outcomes?
People give me trouble with finance all the time.
A student outcome. Yes, there is, I think I know, but I would prefer to read it to you. I think it says, it's what students can do or no.
On the scoring exam, that's me.
Okay, student outcome goals, measures what students know or can do.
I'll support operating procedures.
Say that again?
Measures what students know or can do.
Are can do.
Will not allow the board to not follow the board operating procedures.
Oh, that, I had that written.
It's not in the book.
No, 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 that's.
Yeah, we did, and they're all in there.
From A.J. Craybill two weeks ago, because, well, I wrote it on there, because it was so succinct, and 'cause people kept giving goals that really are good outcome goals, I mean, board needs to deal with finances, the board needs to deal with facilities, and those are outcomes, and that's what the other fifty percent of the meeting are really for, financial outcomes, facilities outcomes. But, so student outcomes by definition is measures what students know or can do.
But that, to me, is still pretty vague.
Uh, okay.
But there.
Something we're doing tonight then does not qualify as student outcome, 'cause it has nothing to do with measuring what students know or can do.
When you look at the board, did you get that?
Just gonna contradict what you said earlier.
It falls into what we have to do here, the governance. It falls into the governance plan that we have to do, but the, um, goals up there are what we measure the student outcomes by, that we go through.
Okay, here's what you get credit for, vision one, student outcome goal set, vision two, student outcome goal monitoring, constraints setting, constraints monitor. If you are using this as a constraint, and to get, before you make the strength, this, this, the constraint on what we're gonna spend, or not spend ninety percent of the time on, and you've got to work on developing that, that's constraint setting, and then talking about its constraint monitor.
Then we need a constraint that says something like, the board shall not allow any of our facilities to come in disrepair.
Well, it's getting up money. And price the bond issue, you know?
My hurricane kind of serious one.
I'm boring.
That's a rough go there, but, um.
Can I, can I go back to this, this, this constraint? Number one, what's, what, uh.
Constraint number one, we're not allowed.
Russell was saying, let's go back to, uh, if you go to page forty-eight, under unity. Uh, number, first of all. We have, we have some board operating procedures.
Yes, yes, we do.
It just has not been adopted by this board or looked at by this board-
And, and reevaluate, yes.
Since probably the past four years, three or four years, okay? We can't even get, we can't even get any points under unity.
Until we do that.
Until we, until we establish board operating procedures. And if you look at the, you know, that does, does not meet focus, we haven't done that. We have not established board operating procedures.
That is correct.
To get one point, you have to anu- once annually review that.
Right.
To get ma- masters focus, we've got each quarter. Evaluate, we have to look at ourselves against those board operating procedures.
Right.
Okay? So, I would say in our constraints, um-
Well, not allowed to not.
We, we, uh, again, I go back to, I think we can use his as another measurable thing to see, are we still meeting number one? And that would require us, maybe it just needs to be that we, instead of putting that specifically, we put down there that we develop, we develop board operating procedures that are adopted by the board and evaluated on a quarterly basis. If we do that, we can meet master level.
Well, and, I, I did, while, while we were doing this, I did find the part about the agenda, okay? Under structure, masters focus, board members receive the final version of the materials to be voted on at least seven calendar days in advance of the board authorized public meeting during which the materials would be considered.
What is that?
It's under masters focus, under structure.
You have to advance your calendar day.
I'm sorry, uh, forty six, apologies. Uh, so seven days in advance, or the item goes to the next month's agenda is what's suggested. Now, if you look under that, no edits are made to the board's regularly scheduled meeting agenda during the meeting or during the three business days prior to the meeting unless a state of emergency has been declared. Now, that also means that nobody can hand used papers at the meeting. You know, we can't hand you papers and expect you to vote. I mean, that, that, by default. I don't know if that happens, but-
It does.
Okay, but that, that to master focus, that does not happen. You should not be handed something that you're asked to vote. See, this is two sides. Y'all gotta tell us ahead of time, but we're not gonna come to the meeting and say, oh, by the way, read this five-page thing and we, we can vote. So this, this, this is a, everyone has to look at their operating procedures. Kelly, you raising your hand or you?
Yes, I am raising my hand.
Okay.
I have a question slash suggestion.
Yes.
Because at their next board meeting, they're going to be approving the superintendent's evaluation instrument. And according to the superintendent's contract and policy, which is custom, you know, of course, across the state, she's supposed to be evaluated based on her, um, well, I call it chapter eleven duties or responsibilities, job description stuff.
Right.
But also now on student outcomes.
Right.
Because of Long Star Governance.
Right.
So would it be appropriate for them to have as a possible second board constraint, something that tells them, cause they're gonna make this decision next month, that they should not approve an evaluation instrument that has, that weighs less than blank percent on student outcomes? In other words, it wouldn't be appropriate for them to approve an instrument that goes fifty fifty or seventy-five percent chapter eleven and only twenty-five percent student outcome? So that would be measurable, but is that more an example of a, a performance measure? Or is it an example of a second, a, a second option on a constraint since they didn't like number two and number three that was on this paper?
Kinda looking ahead, when the board monitoring calendar, what I would ask, as the monitor calendar is, is established, okay? Each month, there's gonna be two and three things to monitor.
Month.
But what you get at first is a baseline. Like, let's say, I think we're looking at the reading program. Well, in a month, we're gonna give a curriculum-based assessment on three through twelve, I mean, three through five reading, okay? That's gonna be a number. You still won't know if she made the goal until May, okay? So there's gonna be kind of a year in here that you need to work with the board on, yes, Long Star Governance ultimately, when you look at that, it should be a hundred percent or ninety-nine point nine nine nine, it's another thing. But at first, uh, now, does it look like we're on track? Yeah, it looks like it's coming up, but as far as, see, it'll take a year because it's supposed to be graphable, plotable. Okay, here's, here's this goal and then here's this one. That's what the board really wants. It's just that it takes a while to get there.
Right.
Now, once it gets started-
But because this is the first time we're having to do this student outcome component with the evaluation, I, I need to make a recommendation to them-
I agree, and that's, that's y'all.
That you've got to weigh, how much, how much of chapter eleven stuff is your, your evaluation gonna score and how much?
Yes. Yes.
We can have a summative to where we wait till the end of the year to actually have all the scores, but you need to come to a consensus that this is gonna be seventy-five percent and chapter eleven's gonna be twenty-five or whatever.
Well, that's between y'all.
Yes, exactly. But is that an, an example-
Would that be a-
A way to focus it on- I wouldn't think that is a constraint. I think that has to do with the superintendent, the board and the contract and an entry year. I think that ought to just be something that you guys-
Do you have an example of what could be a second constraint since they, they really didn't like number two and number three that they came up with before?
Okay, well, a lot of the constraints you're talking about now, substance.
I like number two.
You do? Oh, I thought you guys nixed that.
No, I, I like, I like number two, but we shouldn't, you know, step, step into the superintendent's role as a board.
And could, okay, so, that's a good, okay, how do you-
We might just have to reword it, maybe.
Okay, what would be, what calls that to you? What is something that you think might, could happen that it's important to have that? I mean, give me an example of something that you're going, you know, sometimes I think, you know, Mr., I'm talking about maybe doing these things and that's the role of the superintendent. Give me an example. Or, or talk about somebody in another district. In this neighboring district, they do this all the time.
I've heard some funny things about that wake-up.
You know, old Steve here is a former educator.
I, I can tell you, I've seen where, uh, superintendents, I mean, boards have not liked the, the schedule that a, a school had. And board members came in and pushed the superintendent until that-
Changed the schedule.
Changed that schedule. And it was, and that was a principal level decision and it, and it became-
But, but if she- Is that the past or is that the current board?
Had.
I think we have to focus on the current board.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, you don't want us to fall back into bad habits. If you're saying, but if, has that been taken care of by the fact that if we say to her in either board operating procedures, that we expect to know what other board members' concerns are, okay? Then y'all surely are gonna weigh in on, I mean, like if you, that schedule thing that you heard about. If, uh, uh, you read in Ms. Dowdy's report that, you know, Mr. Smith said, I don't like, you know, the high school schedule, I think it oughta change.
We heard a lot of that this summer.
Okay, let's say that came out in the report. What, what are you, okay, what are you gonna do? That comes out in Ms. Dowdy's report, that Mr. Smith, uh, Ms. Dowdy says, Mr. Smith shared with me, he didn't like the schedule, it's August. And I told him that the, I reviewed it with the, with the principal and with the curriculum office and it is a solid schedule, okay? What does that do for the superintendent? Does that give her protection that y'all know? Because aren't you gonna be mad? I mean, a board oughta be mad if there's not seven of you, if one person or two people can say, or three, actually, since four's the number. I mean, if you know what's going on and you have the answers, that, it, that's what that knowledge is. Because the board's, the superintendent's tendency, I mean, when the captain makes a suggestion, it is seen as a directive. You're on a, who's been in the Navy? When the general comes in and says, hey, I, I, I think it'd be nice if these chairs were all changed out, what's gonna happen?
They'll get changed.
Okay, that's why you have to be careful as a board.
I mean, it does, I am.
Okay? Because there's a need to please. And I happen to know Ms. Dowdy, she has a real need to please this board, okay? So you have got to help protect that from those suggestions that, now, if Ms. Dowdy agreed, you know, I've been thinking about that too, and she wants to change those chairs out. But she's doing it cause someone gave her an idea that she thought was a good idea, not because she felt like she had to do that. And that schedule change, and also, I need y'all to know, there's not a saying I have heard here tonight that hasn't gone in other districts. Y'all are not unique. You are humans. This is a human community with people who love their kids and need a schedule to be a certain way and talk to board members to, to try to get that to happen. There's not a bad guy in this story.
I, I don't think, you know, when I look at that second one, I mean, y'all said you, you know, you like it, or somebody said they like it.
I, I do like it.
All right, collectively or any trustee individually to perform or appear to perform any of the roles of the delegated superintendent?
Can you think of some straight progress?
Um, I don't think I've had that happen.
Okay.
I mean, I, well, I, I mean, I, I'm not having anybody trying to do my role.
It's, it's-
Other than, you know-
That's good to know, okay? Because then you don't need as a constraint.
Okay, okay, wait a minute, okay. If we were to look at that, the only thing I could think of, okay, would be what we've been talking about earlier. And y'all have all talked about it. And y'all have all been working on this. Would it be that, in other words, I, I am supposed, and I, I've had this happen, not from them, but maybe a parent, I am supposed to answer my staff.
Yes.
I'm, I'm responsible for answering to my staff.
Yes.
About information about what's to be done. So collectively, maybe we would say that the board members are responsible, shall not do whatever to, um, uh, take it upon themselves or whatever to answer, in other words, send it to me.
To answer for you.
Okay, and have we been working on that?
Well, the prob- the problem with that is, is that you as a board member know any position the administration takes on something like trying to get our elementary school kids better at math and reading.
Right.
We might very well be able to defend that right there on the spot from the person that says, why are you spending all that money at Carpenter to help those kids read and, and learn math better?
And I-
Well, I mean, why?
Why bother me with it if you can say?
It's a little silly to sit there and say, oh, you better talk this out. I mean, so-
No, no, that, maybe it's an, maybe it's an item though that, um-
Operating questions.
Yeah, we'd have to define, I mean, it's, it's one that you don't know or one that-
Not obvious or not, it, okay, I'd just like to point out, we made a commitment to set, okay? There is, didn't we?
Yes.
Don't you have a date or something?
I do, I got five, five dates from ages seven to seventeen.
Okay, we have a man with five dates, okay? What I would like to suggest is we've done a lot of work there. It is better to take your time and process this information. Y'all need to own this. Y'all need to own this. It needs, you, you need to do this once, it's like getting married, okay? You need to do well. And stick with it because this is your foundation, okay? This is your foundation and don't rush through it. We've made a lot of progress in my mind, we've made a lot of decisions and y'all can think about this, but what would you like the next meeting to do?
Okay, this is what I'd like, maybe we need to do. Uh, we have board operating procedures right now. And, and we need to share those with y'all and maybe we need to look at those. Would you think about that? And look at what we already have in place. Because some of those things we might be able to pull from-
Right.
-to put in here and make it simple.
Good point. You might wanna put that-
Because, because in me, I could ma- I could make it real simple. I could say the board will not, not do the board operating procedures and sum it all up in one. But that's not allowable, so, uh, we gotta break it apart. So maybe if we look at those board operating procedures, maybe we need to back up and say, do we agree with the board operating procedures? Or do whatever, and then, and then tear those apart and say, this, that's what's gonna guide us here. Am I making sense?
Could you bring dates to close session and choose a date for next one?
Yes.
To do that?
Yes.
You wanna do it in a public meeting like this?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're trying to set that up in the-
Russell, Bosch, y'all agree with that? Maybe we need to look at those.
I'm good with that.
Okay, and then if we don't agree with our own board operating procedures, maybe we need to review those before we go to this.
True.
Okay.
Just real quickly, review what we did decide tonight. Does, uh, we, did we decide to keep one or not?
Uh, well, one, we're gonna, we decided we're gonna, meats, partially meats, does not meat, that, that we have one board self-constraint. Uh, the board will not allow the board to, when we give your word, allow adult convenience, a preference to take priority of the academic priorities of our students.
And then we dang three things, I believe.
Two things.
Two.
Two things, two, two.
The fifty percent rule and the ninety percent rule.
Okay. So then-
That's what we got.
Then for-
But that's good, solid. It takes care of your board operating procedures. I mean, I know, I know, we're trying to fill up, you know, I just spent two hours if we didn't really do much. Y'all, the conversation you had is actually more important.
Do, did, did, how many constraints do we have?
Three.
Not more than three.
No, less than three.
Fewer than three.
No fewer than three.
Can we have just one?
Would you have just one right now?
Board self-constraints on the board, no fewer than three, no more than five. Self-evaluates against one constraint monthly. Most, most recent self-evaluation is no more than forty-five days prior to the superintendent's evaluation. So Kelly, when you start doing that, we need to consider this.
I never go to evaluate.
The self-evaluation is in part based on results of goals. And they want y'all to look at your goals and see what y'all can do, which is what I think this first one does, helps Ms. Dowdy help the staff get to the goals because it's freeing up our time. Board self-constraint progress measures, no fewer than, you can have, sorry, you can have one.
I just think they need to probably come to terms with-
A no fewer than one, no more than three for each board adopted self-constraint.
And then we can look at these.
So you have to have at least three self-constraints, but you can have as few as one.
But like with Pam, if we, if we don't agree with our own board operating procedures right now, how can we go forward to this?
Excellent point.
I mean, we gotta agree on those to pick it apart to this, because if we do this and we don't even agree with that, it seems a little backwards.
Oh, and that's gonna be such a strong foundation.
Yeah, so I think that's what we need to do.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, everybody for that?
Yes, because I, I have no idea.
Yeah, and so we need to look at those.
Can I make a, another recommendation possible?
Probably not. No, I'm just joking, Steve, I'm just. I just kept asking, okay.
If, if, page forty-two. And also- Page, um- All right, if, if, if everybody before our next meeting will have read through page twenty-nine and thirty. And page thirty. Thoroughly.
And be thinking of some-
Cause that's, that's the list of potential, that's just some examples of constraints which we looked at before, but we were kinda on the spot at the time.
You don't have to, it is more important to get them done right than to get them done.
Thank you, Steve.
I mean, it needs to be yours.
I motion adjourned.
All right, and I'll bring back another date, okay?
Thanks for-
Thank you so much, Doc. Thank you so much.